I'm committed to read the minutes of the July 7th meeting. It's your back of the last one.
Make a motion.
Second.
I'll say it.
Any comments, discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? Alright, pass final. Um, old business. Something about the agenda here, I'll say, Ken, you're also a old business, right?
Yep.
New business. I'd like to introduce everybody, um, new alternate Ekin Marston. Deferred to by Link, is that what I understand?
Yes.
And great. And he's on board as the alternate as Skip has moved up to become a regular member of the board. And, and it's Link for, for the sake of a couple of seconds anyway, it's, it's, we kind of really rotate back and forth when we have issues that we have major votes. And one week, one person, one week is the other person, Lizzy is the other alternate at the time. And we kind of go and put it in the minutes so we know from meeting to meeting who has been the last person to be, you know, running the campaign. Uh, but you're certainly willing to take part in the, uh, if you're willing to take part in the discussion, jump in and, uh, we'll go from there. Okay? Thanks.
Hey, can I ask, why, where did the name H Road come from? Is anybody here know? We usually don't have the name, not just the word.
We need to arrange.
No, okay, we know the answer.
So it's Grand Road.
It's Grand Road. I don't remember that the name H Road.
I was not sure.
Oh, my goodness.
I heard, I heard, I heard that what we call H Road used to be one side of the H. And then it was like Garvin Road was the other side of the H, and there was one road in between or something like that.
It used to be both Long Hill Road too.
Yeah.
Don't ask me where they get the goats.
Yeah.
I remember when I did down in French Street, it was known as Front Street, Riddler Street and French Street. And the reason why it was French Street is almost all the French Canadian immigrants landed here working in those. So you're not calling it French Street.
Alright, other, other new business. I mean, you can see the agenda's pretty light. Any other need for enforcement?
Uh, I met with the selectmen at the last selectman's meeting to try to change the January 1st date for zoning ordinances to be, because otherwise we need to be in public hearings at this time and moving forward. And they were pretty receptive. We'll just keep them abreast of, uh, any changes. So we're talking marchers or so. So we're back to the under schedule that we had before. Uh, the articles don't address money or, or finance issues. So, I mean, we can still get into warrant finance and things like that. But we've got several areas of the ordinance that, uh, hopefully we'll have time to start picking away at this fall.
Do you have, um, suggestions yourself as to which ones, uh, we need to look at?
Yeah.
More quickly?
And things like that, uh, just to get it back up to where it is. So hopefully this fall we'll get a little bit of chance to start picking through it. Break into that.
Sounds great. Go back to your work.
Yeah, if you want this passage down meeting. Well, the town's finally passage down.
We're all set.
So we come back where we were before. If you wanted to do, we did.
Or something. Anything else? Anybody have anything?
I don't know what, I, Brenda, I mean, we're talking about town forest type stuff, uh, forest, I talked to Ken, is this, is this time?
Well, you tell me, I'm, I'm familiar with the fact that you had come in to talk.
Okay, alright, I may have forgotten how the protocol exactly where I fit into this. Um, yeah, I, I had come in the other day after talking with a couple of local loggers. Uh, we're just some confusion over where we stood with regard to, I'm Steve Bonkin, town forester, for those that need to know. Uh, trying to know exactly where we are with our town timber harvest standards and ordinances. We've gone through a few years back where there was some confusion over if and or how we had adopted state standards by, um, whether by board or by selectmen or by town meeting or something like that. And I was looking for some clarification. Basically, back in 2014, I brought it to the selectmen saying that we had, I was told by the state that we were working now underneath of timber harvest ordinance that were state standardized as opposed to stuff that we had brought in back somewhere around '08 after some timber harvest ordinances crafted by the town in front of town meeting. Without knowing how the state standards were adopted, it had me confused and certainly as town forester, I was out talking with loggers and doing jobs on my own that may have been disseminating incorrect information, we're not even knowing. Similar thing happened in reverse here a couple of days ago, which brought me to Ken in order to try to find out, uh, in reality that we, again, either by some decision of ours or by the state, we are now back going it along in what the state calls option three or our own recognizance code style, um, timber harvest ordinances. So I guess I've gone from being behind the times for a year and a half, two years ago, to now being behind the times, at least since May, from what Ken tells me, that we have now been brought back to, again, governing ourselves for timber harvest ordinances and for timber harvest supervision by code. So I, I guess I was trying to come to the planning board in order to find out if that was something that had been brought in front of them, if it was something which by default, we brought back to our own option three is the term of the, of the, our own recognizance or on supervision, our own ordinances scenario. Or if it was something that was a decision by either the selectman or the planning board and just exactly how that happened. And to plead, please. I'm out there, I know where all the logging jobs are going around in town, probably as much as Ken does, just because I know who they are. I've seen them, I know the trucks. Um, if that's the case and we're now behind, if I was a, a year and a half behind on ordinances at the time, and now I mean, you know, four or five months or however long it is behind, again, we've now changed ordinances again without town meeting and I didn't know about it. Then I don't know if we would have any chance at all of having loggers and foresters working outside of this town have having much chance, other than being reported to Ken and Ken informing them of what timber harvest ordinances are in this town. So I guess it's a question mark from my point of view and, and to hope to just put forth some sort of a statement of, let's get together on this thing. Because, uh, you know, Ken can fill in the gaps, I guess, but I don't know how we ended up where we are. Just that we have flip flopped twice in, in our regulations without ever actually having a hit town meeting. So.
In the time that I've been here, I don't recall any timber issue that came before the planning board. So is, I'm assuming then that that's not routine for, for a timber harvest to come before us as a group?
It was a conditional use eight years ago maybe or so.
We had, we had traps after some heavy cutting in town and with help of the, uh, town forest committee and other committees in town, drafted ordinances which tried to protect the town from unknowing loggers and landowners have cut too hard, particularly down in resource protection zones. And because the state was so slow in bringing their reports of cut back to the town and where these harvests would be occurring, we weren't receiving them for months after logging jobs were finished. So after having years and years and years of saying, of hearing, I should say, um, well, gee, I didn't know, I couldn't clear cut down to the lake sorts of comments, we enacted something that said, if you have a forester involved in a timber harvest who presumably has some license on the line and would know the regulations, you can do the work down to or within the resource protection zone. Otherwise, it was a conditional use permit which we got you guys. And notifications at the time of harvest have to be sent directly to Ken as well, so that he had day one notification of when that job would start. So that someone who did not know that if it was MRP, you had these two choices of operations. That seemed to be a good middle ground of having a good educational purpose, um, oversight. And we went along with that for a certain period of time, but state government over the years has tried to standardize their enforcement from Alfred, where the enforcing state forester works from, along with Ken, but they were saying if we were all going to have varying town ordinances, that they were no longer going to be able to supervise town harvests or legislate or, or enforce town ordinances, because if you have a different ordinance and, and Strathley has a different ordinance and all the time, the state didn't want any part of it at that point. It would then just simply pass it back to code of each town. Somewhere in 14, 2014, presumably as I understand it, the selectmen signed on to move toward what they, the state calls option two, which was essentially a state of limbo, moving toward state compliance and state ordinance and state oversight, which would have removed timber harvesting from Ken's purview and accepted it back totally to the state. But of course, again, with state oversight, there comes oversight and that they don't know where it's happening. We, they only have one person covering the whole southern half of the state. They don't know what's happening down here and there's not a lot of enforcement attached to it. And we were finding that that combined with lack of quick response of paperwork on Augustus' part, we were having the same trouble that we were having before and presumably we would have preferred to continue with our own ordinance that the selectmen signed away. I don't, again, I don't know that any of this ever happened at town meeting, so I don't know to what extent it was by proper channels. So again, I think I now know from Ken telling me, in fact, the state has, correct me if I'm wrong, Ken, the state sent him a letter saying, you guys either have chosen to go it on your own or to, or have defaulted away from complying and therefore we're not going to enforce state standards upon you, you're on your own. So it was either by choice or by neglect. We're now back to being our own enforced timber harvest ordinance again. But again, not knowing that we got there on purpose, as this town forester right here going, please tell me how we got here.
So you're not necessarily against the idea of where we are now, but looking for how we got there?
And to confirm that that's where we are and where we want to be.
Oh, so, so we're not confirmed, we haven't confirmed yet. Can, can you confirm that, Ken? That we're back to the town level?
That's what I told them the other day. They, I'd received a letter and, uh, the direction we were headed, the state kicked us out of that until we go back and do it again. So we're back to where we were, uh, four, five years ago.
Right. So if the selectmen chose to try to be state enforced, again, the question would be, was that part of our normal process? I don't know. And, and if that is the town's desire, then I'm all fine with either one. But again, we ended up in two different places, neither of which seemed to be by design. Uh, the last I knew, the ordinance like Ken talked about was X number of years ago, which brought about the scenario of the, uh, the CEO and forester supervised RP harvesting. And that's the last I knew that had ever been voted on in town. So I, I guess I'm just looking for hopefully some background on this, because the concern A is that I'm spreading bad information out there, not knowing whether we have or haven't adopted this or have a desire to adopt it or not, but also the procedural part of did we get here by design or by accident? And was that the correct way of doing it?
What was the response upstairs when you approached them?
Upstairs to the selectmen?
Yeah.
I haven't talked to them within the last few days about this back turn, so to speak. But when I found out that we had been adopted into what the state called that option two standardized state practices, I went to them and they said, oh, well, DEP came to us and said, we would like to make this a, a state standardized scenario. And it sounded like a good idea and it would remove some responsibility from a busy Ken. And, and, uh, my impression was is that they signed what they called in some of the email trails that I've gotten, a memorandum of understanding. Again, whether that is, you know, proper for us to operate under is a question of mine. But again, we have a form of government that's not as standard as it once was. But with the state trying to standardize things, we're, we're, we're holding in a very precarious position right in the middle where we're neither. And no one inside of this process knows which we are, myself at the forefront of it. So. I would like to think that loggers like the fellow that, that Ken saw the other day that asked me, uh, the way it came about was, I was talking to him about an adjacent lot and his comment was, yep, Ken told him I can't do work down inside of 250. And I went, well, that's news to me, because year and a half, two years ago, we adopted state standards that said that we could. And Ken isn't really the decision maker at this point, but it's now not that same. So I then called Ken and that's what precipitated this conversation tonight. So again, I'm trying not to be, uh, confusing about it, but I don't know how we got, I know where we are. I just don't have any idea how we got here.
Just, uh, if you guys want to look at the zoning ordinance on page 12 in, uh, Land Use Chart, I mean, it kind of just spells out, uh, what Steve's talking about. Just under rural uses timber harvesting for commercial and it shows the four zones where they would have to retain a forester if they were cutting part of that district. Which, I mean, nothing ever changed in zoning.
Well, exactly. That's, that's why.
As far as the board is concerned, nothing should have changed at all.
Right.
But, um, we'll, we'll deal with it the way it is and.
Well, if, if we are now backwardly wanting to be, then we got there completely by accident. I'm just drinking about a procedural. WTF. You know, um, so if we already want to be them, then that's fine. This town forester, I'll educate and disseminate the correct information. But the method that we got here, and again, this has nothing to do with this board or this selectman or anyone that works in the field or anything like that. But we got here completely by accident and by chance.
Well, if it wasn't a town vote and, and the fiscal ordinance wasn't changed, so we didn't, we're, we're, we're just always been in the same place. It was just mincemeat communication.
No, that's always true, but I.
The DEP website telling forest people who look at it that.
Right. The people, the people who go on state websites and say, I am looking for what actions town ordinances are, are seeing that we are state governed up until nay, like Ken said.
Yeah.
And therefore they're coming into town, doing things the way the state would have them be done. And worse, we would then in effect be sitting there wondering why no one's giving Ken a notification or why no one's coming from the planning board or no one's hiring foresters. But we didn't really know that either. So again, I think it's a little bit of, um, it's not a head in the sand or it's not ignorance, but we just really haven't been, we haven't been on top of it. And again, me, I'd like to consider myself as point man for some of these things going on, since I know these guys. But if even I'm not given where we are, how we got here, I don't think they had any chance. So. So again, I'd like to just pass along that if we're trying to stay where we are, then let's just look at the process and make sure that we don't move around by accident somewhere else again.
I mean, I, I would talk upstairs and see what the take is on that. Other than that, I mean, we know what our ordinance says.
Correct.
Uh, and see where they're, you know, what their logic is to, to the way it went.
Yep.
And go from there. I don't know where else to, to take it.
Right. Well, and the only reason I made that comment and I backed off of pushing the selectmen farther for the question of, well, how did it actually happen and why was it not at town meeting? Uh, let's see if I can find the verbiage. Uh, this came from DEP. I reviewed our records for, this is in, um, April of 12. I reviewed our records for active and they submitted, excuse me, they submitted, um, an, an attest to ordinance on March of 2012. And we were advised that the ordinance included amendments adopted by the town on September 29th, 2011. And DEP approved the amendments on April of 2012. These amendments include the adoption of statewide standards. And our understanding is that these and other amendments were adopted by the town's legislative body at town meeting, but if that is not accurate, then it would be very helpful to know since the amendments would then not be legal, which makes sense by our point of view. Uh, I then replied back to not knowing how that transaction actually took place. And a reply back to me came that there was language somewhere within whatever that document was that made the need to repeal existing town timber harvest ordinances move. I don't know what verbiage that would be. Cause that would be a pretty powerful piece of language right there, I would think, if that were ever to be true. Powerful and dangerous, I suppose. So anyway, I'm not trying to, to beat a dead horse, but definitely would like to understand how we got here so we don't move around.
So, so right now, regardless of the fact that we're not sure how we got here, are you okay with knowing what it says in, in the manual and going forth at this point with what you do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, that's the town wishes. That's what I was working on before statewide standards came along. And I'm fully happy to, I, I don't need help looking silly. I'm silly enough looking as it is. So if I find out that, uh, you know, I'd like to know where we, um, I know what the ordinances are. I didn't know that they had been changed, if they had been changed. And, um, again, if I'm out there in the field talking with all of these guys, then I don't want to be adding to the problem. I'd rather be helping care it.
Sure.
So.
Well, like I said, I'll check with them and see where they're coming from, see if there's anybody on the board that remembers back that far. I can do some research up there and find out, you know, how it was done. And go from there.
That'd be great.
And then once that happens, I can get back to you at least.
Please do. And again, if anything comes up, as town forester, if anything comes up that is timber harvest related, I'll lay this on Ken's shoulder, I suppose, but for God's sakes, please call me. Cause even still, I don't, you know, there might be lapses in time from things that happened at this board that I might not know or from the selectmen that I might not know. It was at least six or eight months between when the selectmen supposedly had signed that agreement to go on state standards that I by luck, in talking with local landowners, found out that we had supposedly adopted statewide standards and I didn't even know about it. And it was me tripping over someone that told me, why aren't you using statewide standards that made me look into it?
Yeah.
So none of this ever came to me through the town. So I guess if I can just please, uh, have you guys keep me in the loop on anything that would ever hit this board and or selectmen, so that I can try to help rather than hinder.
Alright. Thank you.
My pleasure. Anything that I missed on that, Ken, pretty?
Do you have a copy of the zoning ordinance and know what it says for Garden Forestry?
I do with the house, but I assume you will take any new one that you have to offer, yeah.
And it's on the town website and stuff like that. Just reread that, cause I don't understand it from the state level. You know, and it's automatic that, you know, once the state has so many towns that have grown, then the following year goes with it. And the state doesn't tell us very much.
And that's, that's why we were wondering whether we maybe we moved into a different category without knowing or something like that?
Oh, definitely. They threw us out of option two and didn't tell us until we got the letter several months later, so.
Yeah, I never exactly understood the, you know, crux of how many towns come along and if so many towns came along, then would we statewide?
Exactly. I mean, it, it makes perfect sense that all the towns use the same standards for timber harvesting, but our resource protection is much more stringent than any other town. So they're not going to enforce any of that in what we call resource protection, but they wouldn't. So, um, what, while we were at option two for a little bit, it wasn't very helpful for us. So when we got thrown out of option two, we're right back to where we were, so, um.
But that puts the onus on you too, then, right?
Correct. Yeah.
So when you say that we have, I hope I understa, I know the answer to this question already, but I'll ask you, Ken. Um, when you say that we're more stringent than other towns, is it because of that conditional use permit and because of the restrictions within?
No, resource protection starts with 10 acres of non-forested wetlands for everybody. Back then it starts with two acres of forested wetlands.
Two acres of forested wetlands?
Is resource protection with a buffer strip around it.
Okay.
So I know the Forest Service is not going to enforce any timber harvest issues in resource protection in a two acre forested wetland.
No.
Because it's not, they don't, it's not their jurisdiction. So that's going to make a, a bigger issue for us as we go through. But that's one.
I don't want to open up a can of worms on that one, but is that where we really want to be? This is more of a question of is that a, a good rank to start with? Because usually the, the 10 acres of wetlands and 10 acre great ponds and all that kind of stuff. The, the two acre number, where, when did that come about and how long? How long has that been enacted?
2010.
2010, I think.
2010.
Yeah.
Okay. I see that as pretty restrictive personally, but that's.
Uh, the town voter did that.
No, I follow you. I, I get you.
Several times, actually. And, uh, they're holding tight to it, so.
Okay.
During that option two period when that was in effect, were there any like major cuttings that took place that?
We, we just weren't getting any notifications and we still don't. You know, if we see a, a yard happening, we just look for the resource protection ones. Which a lot of states, really, there's a tax for the amount of timber that's being harvested and that generates the enforcement. That's why they look for the paperwork.
That's a good answer, right?
That's one, yeah, a lot of them are like that, but, uh, you know, I'm surprised in Maine doesn't.
Right. Well, that's very much got more to do with the tax structure of the state than timber harvesting itself, yeah.
And the lobbyists.
Right. Okay. Well, I guess that's, that's fine for me this evening. So keep me in the loop and hopefully touch base with you soon.
I was going to say, as town forester, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Is there any ordinances or, or regulations to winaken start in the morning harvesting?
That is not necessarily a timber harvest ordinance, but I'll pass that one off to Ken, because that's more of, it's more of an industrial question, not necessarily related to timber harvesting, as I always understood.
The only reason why I'm asking, you take these big logging rigs, they come down over my road at quarter to five in the morning. They use the engines to hold back brakes, right? And it wakes up the whole neighborhood.
Right.
At quarter to five in the morning.
Well, again, I'll pass that one off to Ken as whether that is or isn't an ordinance. But my question to you would be, is that something that truly is a timber harvest problem? Or is that something that's happening with all commercial vehicles on your road?
No, it's the guy down the bottom of the hill that's harvesting lumber, it's his truck.
Well, that's what's happened so now, but I, with all due respect, I would not put forth an ordinance in order to change it. Please take this with all due respect. I would put forth an ordinance to change, uh, timber harvesting or putting the new rule based upon one logging job that's happening on your road either.
So it's not important with any, any rules that they had established at a certain time, but no, some need.
Right.
Many production operators, great law of the hills, there's a time limit, they can't operate.
Yeah, well, we do that with the gravel pitch, isn't it?
Yeah, that's right.
Six o'clock, isn't it, Ken, that we?
Well, that's why I'm saying, it should, it's sometimes, I'm just saying from a forester's point of view, it shouldn't be a logging only ordinance. That should be, if it is an ordinance, it should be a formal noise ordinance, yeah.
Yeah.
So if truth be told, someone coming up and down the road, I don't know, can really be considered in violation. Someone on a landing, working next to your home, making noise could, because you don't know who's driving through your town at any given moment of any given day. I mean, you can see the name on the side of the truck, but again, that one guy that's working near your woodlot, near your lot for one week, once every 20 years, shouldn't necessarily be getting.
The only reason I brought it up is some of my neighbors, they don't own this board. They come and ask me about it.
Sure.
Myself, I'm up at four thirty, five o'clock in the morning, so it don't bother me none.
Yeah.
But it was some of the neighbors who retired like I am, and I guess they don't get up in the six in the sky.
Well, again, again, I think the short answer is, the way I understand it is if it can be attributed to, or that's not very crazy either. Noise that happens on a road, I don't understand as being. a road, I don't understand as being legislated. Noise that happens on a woodlot perhaps can. And noise that is pertaining to logging should be the same as that pertains to graveling or any other commercial operation on a lot. But who knows what truck goes past, what house at what day. And that should, but that by itself, in my opinion, should.
You can't, but you say, you don't get all the details though.
You got it.
Forest website has this, has an Option 3, July 2016, so that's accurate.
Okay.
According to the letter they sent me.
But that could have been just amended three days ago.
Oh, it could, by 2016, so.
Right. All right, guys. Well, that's all I got for you tonight. I appreciate your time.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else with anything?
Yeah, Brenda, I'm still waiting for those two books they already got.
Yeah.
Remember they were going to be sent out to me, but they were going to give themselves?
I guess not.
Which ones don't you have?
To the ordinance board.
I've got the same one.
I've got the bulk of the, the contractual manual for the committee.
Okay.
And you have some?
All right, anything else? That being said, motion, adjutant?
I have a motion, adjutant.
Second?
Second.
Call the food. Thanks for being here.